All right, we're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Give you a second.
Okay.
Do the pledge. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gather?
Present.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Here.
This is Amy Ashcraft.
Present.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Present.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow together. Father, we are just extremely grateful to you as we approach this birthday of our country. We're reminded of your hand in the founding of this nation in so many ways. Lord, we cherish that heritage. And Lord, we pray that you will help us, that we'll live up to the heritage that is be passed along to us. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to be here for this Board of Education meeting. Express thanksgiving, Lord, for each member and pray for them and for their family, that they might experience your peace and in the tough decisions that are sometimes forced upon them, oh, Lord, that you would be their guide, that you would be their direction giver. Lord, I thank you so much for the leadership of our schools. And, Lord, we could just pray together and ask that your divine favor might be upon them to guide them as they navigate some treacherous waters in today's world. So grateful to you, God, that you're a steadfast compass. May your blessings rest upon them and rest upon this meeting tonight. We pray it together in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
This is Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
We have two presentations this evening. I'd like to invite Alicia Adams to the microphone. She's gonna give us an update on the district wellness program, and this is a requirement by our state of Ohio.
I do have a quick presentation if you wanna come down to the mic. It will be brief, but the vaults are still open. We won't be able to see it.
How brief is it? They could sit up here, turn around.
Is it the same one that's on our screens?
Do what?
Is it the same one that's on our screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, like, as Mrs. Bowers said, it is a requirement for us to, um, um, just review our wellness policy and provide a brief presentation to the board annually. Um, I also wanted to sort of give a quick rundown of what our wellness committee does, um, to support students and staff throughout the district. So, the responsibilities of the wellness committee, um, is to include parents, students, representatives of the school food authority, so our food service staff, our educational staff, health and P E teachers, mental health staff, school health professionals, like our school nurses, um, members of the community and administration. So we do have a wellness committee in place. We meet, um, every other month or so, four to six times a year, um, and more as needed. We assess our current school environment and some of the initiatives and activities and, and things that we have in place, resources for students, um, activities for staff. We review the district's wellness policy, present policy to you guys for approval. Um, we measure and implement different aspects of the policy and then any recommendations or revisions that would all come through this wellness committee. So just a brief overview of the policy, um, we follow the Board adopted wellness policy as part of our comprehensive wellness initiative. The main kind of three focus items there are good nutrition and regular physical activity affect the health and well-being of the district's students. We all know that research shows positive correlation between students' health and well-being and their ability to learn and that we, as a school district, play an important role in developing the healthy habits of our students. So that's where the sort of comprehensive wellness policy comes from. It does have a pretty significant focus on students, but there is a staff aspect too that we've also focused on throughout the year. So just some of the highlights, and I won't read them all to you, but these are straight out of Board policy. Um, they're, they're very common. They're sort of across the board. Um, but it talks about nutrition education to be included in our curriculum, physical education programs provided to students K-12, free drinking water, um, throughout the day and at mealtimes. Uh, students are provided thirty minutes to eat, that our food and beverages, um, that we offer students meet or receive the USDA smart and acting school nutrition requirements. Um, and that our food service program offers affordable access to the foods that the students need. So a full, the full wellness policy is in there. Um, it's policy eight five one zero. If you want all of that, but those are just some of the highlights and the focus for our students. In addition to that, um, we obviously, we meet our physical education and nutrition mandates according to the policy. We utilize wellness funding that comes to us through the state, um, for resources. We have mental health services and supports that we put in place in our buildings. Um, we've looked at adding staff and resources as much as we can to, to support student wellness. We also provide physical health services. We're, there are, um, other school districts that provide, um, like a doctor's office, physical health services in their district. We are one that does, and, and I think that's a tremendous bonus for our community. Um, we have prevention services. We have cook squad in our middle school and high school. We have homeless youth services. Um, I used to act as our homeless liaison for the district. Lindsay White has been working as our homeless liaison for the district. We have community liaisons through Butler County E S C. Uh, all of these family engagement activities, before and after school programming, academic interventions, all of these things to provide this comprehensive wellness for our students. Um, in addition to that, I've spoken to you all before, previously, about some of the school safety initiatives that we've done. Um, and we use, we often use grant funding for that as well. Some of the staff initiatives, we partner with Premier Health. Um, Premier Health offers our staff wellness workshops and challenges. Most of those are done online. Um, this year we did, um, you know, there's, there's ones about healthy food choices and cost-effective healthy food choices and things like that. Those are recorded workshops that our staff can access anytime. We do biometric health screenings, free flu shots, mammograms for our staff. And then we offer some bonus activities for our staff as well. We know that, um, we want our staff to be physically healthy, but also we want their, their social emotional health to be as high as it can be too, so that they can serve students. You can't fill other stuff with an empty cup yourself. So, we wanted to provide opportunities for our staff. We offer chair massages throughout the year. Um, we have a monthly group delivery, fresh fruit from Donal Gems that comes and gets distributed out to all the buildings, so staff has access to that. Um, we've offered Zumba and yoga classes. We also use some grant money through the wellness committee to install filtered water bottle filling stations in all of the buildings. So, we've got tremendous feedback on those. Both students and staff can access those. So, um, we're gonna look to try to increase the number of those filling stations that we have in the buildings as we can, as the money becomes available. And then at the end of the year, we did a We Made It Walk. So, um, on the Tuesday of the last week of school, we had staff join us over at the track, um, and, and walk a mile to sort of celebrate the end of a successful year and get some steps in and, and sort of a healthy initiative. Um, and there was a pretty good turnout for that. So we're excited to see that come back. Um, so moving into the future, we don't have any new recommendations for the policy or anything like that, but we do have some goals that we would like to accomplish as, as we move forward with the wellness committee. We wanna continue to implement additional wellness resources and activities for our students to support their physical, emotional, academic growth, whatever that may be. We're always looking at social, emotional learning and, and mental health and behavioral needs and things like that. So as those supports and resources come available, we wanna continue to be able to implement those and support those as much as we can. We also know that we need to add some representatives to our committee. Specifically, we need some student involvement. Um, we do need to add, um, some of our mental health staff, and we would like to add more parents. I am a parent. I have students in the district, but we need some people that don't fill dual roles. We like to get some parents that, you know, maybe don't, they're not employed by the district and get some of their input as well. Um, and then also, we wanna provide meaningful wellness opportunities and activities for our staff while also increasing staff participation. We know everybody's busy. We know our staff is oftentimes overwhelmed and, and things. And we wanna, we wanna do things that are meaningful for them, that they see value in, but we also wanna see some increased participation in those things as well. So, those are goals for the wellness committee moving forward. Um, some of the things that we've done and where we're at, um, that's a, that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
How many homeless kids do we have in the district, roughly?
You know, Mark, that's a really good question. It's a tough one. We talk about this a lot because we only know the homeless students that come to us that need some support for transportation or things like that. I, I think our number is much significantly higher than what we know. Lindsay and I, over the couple of years, you know, we often will look somewhere between ten and twenty that we know of, that we work with. But again, I think our number is higher than that.
According to our C C I P report that we've been working on lately, it looks like twenty-five were accounted for in that system. That doesn't mean that's exactly right, 'cause some do not self-report.
Yeah, and that, there's a lot to that, you know. There's, there's some, um, you know, personal, you know, um, concerns with reporting those things. I think a lot of people are afraid that if they do come forward with that, that we'll kick them out of the district, which the McKinney-Ventil Law says we absolutely wouldn't do that, can't do that, and won't do that. You know, our job is to support them and remove the barriers for them. Um, but yeah, I mean, it, it fluctuates throughout the year, but it's usually somewhere between ten and twenty that, that we work with, the actual number.
There's a lot of them. So we were providing transportation to ten families.
How many?
Ten families. So there are multiple students and those students, but...
Is free and reduced lunch part of this program as well?
Yeah, yes.
So, like, I know our number has historically been right around fifty percent. Um, do we ask those questions as they enroll? Do we, to get them to self-report? 'Cause I, the reason I'm asking that question is I just think with inflation, some of the things that are going on in the world right now, that that number probably is gonna continue to rise. I'm just curious how, if we're going after it.
But more than again, with pride, there, I do sense there would be more families to qualify, but they just, with pride, don't want to, so...
That is part of registration. I can tell you all the years that I worked over there, there were numerous parents that would come in there. They don't wanna tell because they're afraid they're gonna get their kids taken away from them. So...
So, yes, we, we sense there's more.
The definition of homeless too is, it's pretty all-encompassing. I mean, according to McKinney-Ventil, you can be considered homeless if you're just doubled up with a family member. So if you've lost your home for whatever reason and you're doubled up with a family member, that qualifies as homeless. So, and, and there's a lack of education too within the buildings and for the community too, that, that that does qualify as, as homeless, you know, and that the school does have an obligation to provide some resources and support and transportation as needed and things like that. So, you know, if a student, if they lose their home here in district and they're displaced and they're living in Middletown, we are responsible for figuring out transportation for that. So we've utilized U T S to transport those students often, so that they can finish the year in their home school district. And then we work with those other school districts to, um, split the cost of that transportation and things like that.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Nice report, Alicia. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I invited you to a meeting to discuss further, but if that doesn't work, let me know. We'll find a date. Thank you. All right. We have a surprise guest this evening, Mr. York. He heard there's a special person on the agenda. He wanted to come out and make sure we also knew about Butler Tech. So welcome, Mr. York. It's always a pleasure to have you in the house.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for letting me pop in and, and share some things. And Alicia, put me down for a chair massage.
You get a special invite, Mr. York. I'm just saying, when it comes time for certain votes, like, you know, executive session.
Make sure you all are included next year.
Uh, I'm gonna, I wanna point out some things that you guys can read, but, uh, I know that the community can't read the, the, it's too bad that Butler Tech can't send this out to everybody that lives in the district, but...
Are we allowed to post it?
Huh?
Like, can we post this on our website?
I don't, I don't know if this is supposed to...
It's, it's public record.
Yeah.
And we have partnership with them. So I'm just saying.
Yeah. Uh, three or four things on the inside of that, uh, this, uh, student success pamphlet. Uh, uh, the first one is a, a big project that, uh, Art Tech is doing with Miami, which is, uh, I think it's probably a first, where Miami is cooperating, I shouldn't say it, where Miami's coming together with school district to cooperatively, uh, do a project. And if, uh, you'll recognize that building as the old Knightsbridge Building for Chant and Vapers, uh, that's called the M-Hub. It's an advanced manufacturing. Uh, it sounds like it's gonna be a really, really neat, uh, project for kids. Uh, the second one on there is the, um, growing, uh, Bioscience Center, and it's growing by twenty-eight thousand square feet. So it's gonna, it's gonna be a huge project as well, enlarging that building over on Seventy-Five. One of the really exciting projects is the Aviation Building that's, uh, being built at the Hook Field in Middletown. Uh, it's down by the Warbirds Museum. It'll have access from Route Four. There will be, uh, a really, maybe two hundred students, up to two hundred students can be housed in that new facility. So that's exciting, uh, as well. Uh, one of the most popular programs is the welding program, A and M, uh, the partitions that you see up there at the top of your page, uh, that's, that goes into the expansion of the welding program. Uh, we think that up to two hundred kids will be able to, uh, uh, be accommodated much, and let that grow. Sophomores, more sophomores will be able to come into the welding program as well. Uh, a new robotics lab, uh, and then, uh, some upgrades for, um, adult education. So, you know, I, I've mentioned this before, but Butler Tech has over eighteen thousand students when you count all the satellite, um, sites and adult ed and all that. So, they reach a lot of people. Uh, it's one of the best, uh, opportunities for our kids. Uh, C T E career tech education is the buzzword in Washington and Columbus and all over. And so, uh, we're fortunate to have the very best, I think, career tech school maybe in the country in our town, that our kids can take advantage of.
I love how they say, "We're disrupting the assembly line model of public education."
Yes.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
I often hear people say, uh, there's not enough room for all the interested students to participate. Anything that's ever looked at creatively around that?
Um, they did some creative things this year by adding, um, la- last year, by adding a session, uh, for welding.
Yes.
So there were some additional kids for welding. And that's been the program that more kids get close out of. There's about, uh, close to two thousand kids that apply for eight hundred positions, maybe.
Wrong.
Uh, and so it's, it's a tough process. And, uh, you know, they do a lottery system. Uh, and early on, that was thought to not be a good thing, uh, but it's ended up being a positive.
I think so too. Patty and I attended the, um, all boards evening and certainly got to circle around the program. And I had something I noticed over the years since I left and came back. Really was impressed with the whole mental health piece that I'm sure is not in here, nor does anyone plan to deal with, but being reactive and adaptive. They really let kids lead that through, through just aha moments. And I was impressed with some of the sharing around that.
And you'll, Dr. Tom Fetter is the Miami person that's working with them in the project at the Bora, the old Bora Center.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Mr. York. Welcome. Um, next we have treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, I would like to pass to block items C and D and ask for approval of the board meeting minutes for May nineteenth and thirteenth.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve A and B, which is the board minutes of May nineteenth and May twentieth. So, Mrs. Ashcraft, no second. Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
This is Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. Uh, next, I would like to block items C and D and currently financial reports is presented as well as a new fund.
Looking for a motion to block C and D, which is the May twenty twenty-four financial reports and a new fund for Butler, roll, Community Connection.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
This is Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. Next, I would like to block items D, F, and G. This is all around, uh, the appropriations and the advances.
Looking for a motion to block E, F, and G, which are the appropriation and advances for twenty twenty-four.
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, I have a second.
My second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Any discussion?
These are just normal, like, every...
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that we need to...
No, just, it tells where we're gonna land at the end of the year. Gets us started so that we can start spending money on July one. Uh, the advances that are down there, these are actually less than last year. Had some money drop in this weekend that I wasn't expecting, so, um, this is less than what we thought we were gonna have to advance.
Do you know how old are these, like, the food services and the school fees are those? Just...
Yeah, the one is the old fund. You can cash some, and I can tell you that amount. So the old amount that's hanging out there was C eighty-four. This is updated since I ran this, the financial report. Let me go there. Oops.
Nope, he's in order right here. Don't lose your talking skills.
It's like, um, I'm gonna say three hundred thousand is that old one. We're just getting to the point where less and less, because that was opened out back in twenty fourteen. Less and less is gonna be paid off. So these kids are graduating and eventually we're probably gonna need to transfer, not advance only to move it back. So...
That's kinda what I was asking, like, these are things that are just never gonna be paid off.
Every year, it's gonna... And I will tell you real quick, though, we are so looking forward to working with E P C next year, uh, with the food service program. Alicia Adams and I both have been working with Bonnie. Uh, some great opportunities out there that I think if we're not operating in the black in year one, in year two, I feel like that we will be. So, um, not necessarily that old fund going away, but I think in two years, this fund will not be negative anymore. So some of the things we're looking at are some costs with purchasing. We do a lot through Cisco. We're gonna be working more with G F S that offers rebates and things. Um, so we're, we're excited about that. I think we're heading in the right direction here with this and...
What do we do for someone who's not paid their school fees or their old charges when they're ready to graduate? They can't...
They don't get their diploma. They're just, they're short of actually making them afford, trying to get it.
And, and I will tell you, very impressed with the ministerial group here in Edgewood because a lot of times our community, through grants, step up and pay some of those fees. And I wanna say, Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I first came here about a year and a half ago, I thought we were looking at like a six hundred and twenty-four thousand. I mean, that sounds less. That's, that's pretty good. That's decreased by fifty percent by my, I call it Kelly Math, which could be wrong, but, but I recall that being over six hundred thousand.
I think we've done well. It's not where we want it, but we are headed in the right direction.
Okay.
What were you referred to? You said you had some funds dropped over the weekend that you weren't expecting.
Um, so, these grants, you have to actually go out and spend the money, and then you apply to the state to get the money back. So, we submitted on the fourteenth. I had no idea that we're gonna drop that fast, so when I was out there looking this weekend, was, the P C R money started coming in. So like, some of these, we were gonna have to advance eighty thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars. Some of them are off of here completely. This list was bigger before yesterday. But it's just not closing the amount negative. So we take money from the general fund, put it over there to balance it out. And then after the first of the year, we move it back. But we got a lot of payments this weekend, so...
So the one point four surplus that you showed, one point four million surplus that you showed in your, um, financial records, does that, taking into consideration the money that dropped, does that factor in?
State, federal, public?
That one point four is all general fund. These grants have nothing to do with that at all. We do have to use some, like, for food service. We'll take that money out of general fund, but on July one, we move it right back over in hopes of collecting this money, but...
So that number is where we finish the year?
The one point four, oh, yes. That's, yep.
That's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
This is Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. Okay, next, I would like to block H I and J.
Looking for a motion to block H I and J, which would be our insurance, our M O U with Butler County Sheriff and Butler County E S C contract.
Send it.
Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
My second.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt. Any discussion?
Have these changed at all, or have these been?
Um, they have changed a little bit. The, um, Butler County E S C went up just a little bit. The Butler County Sheriff's Office has also gone, every place is experiencing inflation, just like we are. Uh, I think when we look at it, I'm wanting to say maybe two dollars an hour, um, for our school resource officers.
Okay.
So it, it has increased, so...
What does that equate to? You, 'cause I actually looked at that number and couldn't see it in your, your memory. There was a difference. Cause we were like at fifty-five thousand last year, if I remember correctly, right? Do we have any idea what that, changes that number to?
I don't know. Yeah, if we're born at fifty-five thousand.
That we pay for S R Os, yes. It's...
We pay about two hundred and fifty thousand. I, we're all talking per off, per off.
Yes, yes.
So what do we got?
And I think it's like fifty-eight now. So it's up about three thousand per off.
It's toward the end. It has their rate on there that they can work up to two hundred days. Um, and then the supervisor, which last year was, um, Miss Molly Johnson here at the high school, her rate is a little bit more than the other officers. We get a little bit of grant money. So if you think in terms of...
Not much?
Yeah, not much. Um, the one was, I, I think sixteen thousand dollars in grant money, but I, I think it was close to a quarter of a million dollars that we paid for resource officers last year.
That's unpaid to any...
Yeah, it was toward the end. It has their rate down there and the number of days they're allowed to work.
Well, it's probably gonna be a little bit higher than that due to we have, uh, one building in the city limits that Mr. Trent takes care of. Are they pretty comparable cost-wise?
They were less prior to this upcoming year. Now they wanna take the rate up to Butler County rate. It was a significant savings. I'm gonna say about fifteen thousand dollars. It was significant. They're, they're moving it up to the Butler County rate.
Is that on this agenda anywhere?
Their contract is not on this agenda.
Okay.
This is strictly Butler County.
Okay.
And...
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, you'll get your card.
I know. I forgot we're on pressure.
We just haven't received very much yet.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to block uh board facilities two, uh Johnson Control Items, one is a quote, one of the service proposes.
Looking for a motion to block K and L, which is two separate contracts with Johnson Control, so moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler, any discussion?
Let's take, I don't, I I tried to look at this quite, uh, not the quote, I'm sorry, the service contract. So is that something we have them doing now, or is that um somebody else is doing that now?
They are doing it for us.
Okay.
And Mr. Coons is obviously overseeing some of this?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, under special services, I would like to block items M through Q.
I'm gonna look for a motion to block M through Q.
Send it.
Which looks to be about five separate contracts. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Any discussion on this?
Here's the only question, I guess, like just briefly, the good solutions contract, what exactly does that software do?
They do our Medicaid reimbursement. These are pretty standard with the exception of that unique learning, I believe that this new, um.
That's also routine, it's our curriculum, it's the curriculum for our MB students, um, we buy that every year, we are way too less licensed this next year, we want to call it a nine.
Is that because we have somebody in-house to do it?
No, it's because we are using Amplify, um, in some of our resource rooms to up the rigor a bit for some of our students.
Okay, good. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
This is Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next agenda item, um, I just wanted to bring up the September board meeting, see if we can move that to September thirtieth.
Looking for a motion to move the board meeting to September thirtieth instead of the twenty-third, so moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Any discussion?
I might be here, huh? Do you wanna talk about the July meeting while we're, while we're here?
Let's do it, uh, let's get a, yeah, let's do, let's do a roll call. Mrs. Bowers, do the roll call please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Question carries.
The July meeting, um.
Is currently the twenty-nine.
Is the twenty-nine. Does the twenty-second work? Works for me.
It's not working.
Worked. Four is better than three. What, when do you leave, the twenty-first?
Well, and then, so just so you know, Patty's out of town seven, the fifteenth doesn't work, right?
It's not for me, no.
Fifteen doesn't work, so we go to that Monday, and then, oopsie, votes on July tenth, we could move it to a Wednesday the tenth if you wanted to, to get five, if all parties, you're not in town, so that doesn't hurt.
Yeah, that's just a couple of weeks away, let's let's go with the twenty-second. Does that work, does that work?
Yeah, that's that's fair week, that's the Monday night a fair week, so it responds.
I might be, I might be in jeans. And listen, I come see, it's right, I might be in jeans, but okay.
I don't know, we just need to make sure, put put with the news, or the media that we are bumping to the twenty-second of July.
Okay.
That work? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Spiner?
Well, I just was so busy doing Mrs. Bowers part, I wish for that mine.
It's your job, though.
So, I would like to recommend uh approval of item six A, overnight trip for DECA, summer leadership retreat, and best buddies.
We'll look for a motion for the DECA overnight field trips.
Send it.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second? Mr. Andrew Pressler. Uh, these trips, they take every year, right?
Hang on a minute, yeah, it looks like not just all the, all of the Butler Tech overnight trips, so it's DECA, it's the FFA, and um best buddies, which is DECA, so. DECA has two, one's the Seamer, I'm sorry, that's one, the summer leadership institute, and the other is the FFA camp.
We don't have a FFA camp.
It says, well, FFA's actually at camp this week, um, DECA will attend summer leadership retreat in Ohio, FFA camp in Mesquita, and they'll uh attend the best buddy leadership retreat in Indiana, so they have two of them, sorry.
That would be.
Two overnight trips.
Okay.
One's July twelfth to the fifteenth, the other is July nineteenth to July twenty-second, they're at DECA.
So DECA's summer leadership retreat is a FFA?
At an FFA camp.
Okay, that's where you got me.
Yes, and I confused myself, sorry about that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
This is Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item is item six B, you will have nineteen revised policies. Whenever Neola recommends that we revise policy, it's over language changes through House Bill and Senate Bill language. So this is a first reading for review only of nineteen revised policy as it pertains to language changes. I'm not so sure we need an approval for that.
I'm just.
Okay. All right, next item, cellphone policy, wow, this has brought up a lot of discussion across the state and the nation. Um, the nation talks about the importance of students not using cellphones in school just because of mental health uh increasing and just having that downtime. But our governor had asked that we revise our policy prior to June twenty twenty-five. We were looking at revising the policy for the upcoming year to near the middle school. Certainly, cellphones are allowed on bodies, but they're not to be out or turned on during the school day. And that's the policy that I'm proposing before the board this evening as presented. So it's revising our current policy, just to say that, yes, they're allowed, they're certainly allowed out during extracurricular, after school, but during the school day, during the hallway, not to be out or turned on, basically not seen. So this is just our first. And that's aligned to the governor's request just a year early.
Are you asking for a motion for this to be?
I am, to revise this policy as presented.
This is first read on it.
Oh, I thought we had discussed it, so I mean, we don't have to, if you wanna do a read, we can, but we would like to get this advertised as soon as possible, but we've kind of been talking about this for a while.
We're stumbling a while.
Let's give a motion, let's just.
Okay, all right.
I will look for a motion.
Well, there's, we don't need a motion, because it's first read, it's just.
What if, what if we go?
I think we have to have a first read, we've not had it before.
So are we allowed to discuss it right now?
Yep.
All right, what don't you like about it?
I don't like, I don't like that it says you can't, not on buses for extracurriculars, I think that's a little bit. I mean, cause there's kids who are gonna have to call their parents, and they're gonna be.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's the way it's intended, it's not allowed out to and from school, extracurriculars, you're allowed out.
Yeah, I'm kinda struggling with the language about on the buses, I mean, I'm good with everything else, the the buses, though I, I'm just thinking about the people that support me and elected me and and kinda their take on, I don't think that would be real popular for a lot of them.
The bus driver thinks it's a safety issue.
Yeah, that was my question.
During after-school activities, like, I don't know.
You know, a lot of times it presents extra noise, they're playing music, they prefer them not to be out at all either. Um, but extracurricular is a whole different thing, that's not during the school day, and certainly sports, they're gonna have to be making contacts with families. So I agree, this should be a first read, but realize that it's being proposed as presented.
Well, you're not alone on some of this verbiage in this, because I I know that I'm quite ready to take that plunge.
Yeah.
During after-school activities, they should be powered off completely, not just placed in a vibrator, silent mode, sort of out of sight, when directed, it's not letting me move over.
It's all of me, there aren't any reasons, so there you go.
Anything else in here before we bring it back besides the bus?
Yeah, I, I mean, I I love the fact that not in the classroom, you know, from the start of school to the end of school, but I think after they get off school, I think they ought to.
Do you think it's a safety issue on a bus with the noise?
I just, that, well, I don't know, I kinda got mixed feelings about that, cause I mean, I almost wonder, you know, discreetly sitting there, you know, but how's our bus driver gonna enforce a cell phone policy? I mean, so they'd have to be blatantly doing, you know, stuff, so I mean, I get that.
Well, I I totally understand not having ten different songs played on one of us while I'm trying to drive.
But on silent, that's not an issue, so maybe that's what you're talking about.
I have followed buses in particular in the morning, and it's it's actually almost kinda comical, especially in the winter time, it's still dark, and all you can see is a bunch of illuminated faces, because they're all sitting, and they're looking at their their phones, and they're watching their videos, they're doing all their other stuff, but I I'm thinking back like when I went to school, this was long before cellphones, and you think there's shenanigans with cellphones, you should have saw what we were doing back in the eighties, so, you know, I I imagine probably putting the phones away creates a whole different set of safety concerns, cause then I think, I think the the phones, I think quite honestly, are a distractor and a source of entertainment for a lot of the kids when they're on the buses, and I think probably most of them are paying more attention to their phones than they are.
So if the music's an issue, maybe we just say they're gonna be on silence, and not to be ringing and all that, just silence, so you can still.
Or just. Or head, or earbuds, and then, yeah, something like that.
Okay. We'll come back with that, anything else that's of concern?
Well, and yeah, I'm the, like during after-school activities, I guess it says that uh, it's stored out of sight when directed by the administrator or sponsor, so you have a kid who's sitting at a wrestling tournament for however long, they can't get the phone out for eight hours.
That's not the way this was intended.
Well, that's, that's the way I read it.
Okay, so I'll take a look at that, that's not the way that was intended.
I do love the fact that we're now on top of that, I do too.
To be honest with you, when this was ran by the students, and I said this last month, they didn't mind this, but they did want them out during lunch. And they didn't mind it during class in the hallways, they understood that, but lunch was a biggie, and actually, the very first revision was, said that. And then when Dewine's policy came out, we just thought, okay, we're bringing these revisions in, it'll be your Dewine's request, um.
Do you know what his policy is gonna say, is there?
I do, I can send that via email to you, I have it right now.
Does it address buses and all that kinda stuff?
I believe it does, Mark, but I'll have to look at it again, it's been a week since I looked at it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I have that, you'll get that tonight.
So is that gonna be a mandate, or is that gonna be?
It's a mandate, but not until June twenty twenty-five, from Dewine, it's a mandate.
It is a mandate.
It is a mandate, but you know what's interesting? Awesome with that mandate, it makes you wonder who's making money sometimes, because a system was shared that is costly, that you can store it. Store so that they won't make sounds or anything, I'm like, why would you pay, you know, a hundred, I'm I'm guessing how much they would be, let's just say a hundred dollars per student, why would you do that? Just say they're not to be out, so it makes you wonder, is this being sponsored by, you know, something? Now, that's me saying that.
So I'm gonna say, so what are you saying now, that you can put the phone?
It's like a storage, it's like a storage lock, you could check them in, and they could be locked up all day long.
Gotcha, so it's a.
That was recommended as an option. But no funds were created around it, so that they could be locked and not stolen.
Fabricated.
Like a lock box.
Solution for.
No, I don't like that.
Both stop.
Yeah. So anyway, all right, noted, and I will make such revisions.
Well, I don't like the lunch either, if we're just.
Well, that's not gonna be an option for a year, I mean, in a year, we're not allowed to have, have it out.
I don't, I I don't, well, we gotta give him, he'll change his mind. Yeah, we're also gonna do, sit and fight and argue.
Start of the school day to the end of the school day.
We'll have this discussion again next month, I will make the changes.
Wait, who's not going to be here next month? You're not going to be here, oh wait, he's on my side, I'm on my side.
I'm on his side, so.
Okay, let's go back to the twenty-nine, so we need a policies that we all are in such agreement with, it is awesome, just like the wellness policy, uh, we have to read annually. We also need to update the board with the family engagement policy, and you have that uh enclosed in your um agenda. And basically, for the families and our participants out there, it's the same policy, but um, and this was created years ago, just saying the importance of family involvement in our community. We do have a a parent engagement uh committee that fits these requirements, um, but I hope it's also the expectation that schools, each individual building are inviting parents in, and and they're able to have input and provide feedback to the education of students. But the policy pertains to the fact that we need to be cultivating good relationships with our families, and we need to have schools that are supportive and welcoming. We need to have effective communication plans, there needs to be volunteer opportunities, um, we need to talk about the importance of that school-home connection and how we are engaging families in decision-making and advocating for students, just like you're advocating tonight about, hey, do we have cellphones at lunch? All these discussions are healthy and and important. But it just emphasizes that whole um engagement piece of how collaboration makes us better and improves the education for all of us. So the policy tonight is before you, and it's basically meeting a requirement that we have talked about it and reviewed it, and if there's any concerns, this would be the time to do so, but anyway, I guess I blew right past what we were doing on policy two-one-one-one. Not looking for a motion unless you need to have a discussion. So we're good? Another informational item is our organizational chart. Before you, it's um an organizational chart that is to propose, and I would say that we certainly can um have a a review on this, you have it attached to yours, if not, here we go. I wasn't sure if it was attached or not, uh, but basically, we have eliminated seven to eight administrative positions since twenty eighteen. So that was under Mr. Fussnecker as well as myself, so with that.
Say that for her.
We've eliminated seven to eight administrative positions since twenty eighteen, so it's time to review and revise our organizational chart. Um, so through those reductions, you will see that we've reduced quite a few directors. We now will have human resource as Alyssa Beckett continues to lead curriculum, as uh Scott Fussnecker continues to lead. Special education as Alicia Adams is being recommended uh this evening for a job revision, I'm, oh, sorry, I'm I'm jumping. Special Ed, Lindsay White, and then health and safety, you're gonna see in personnel tonight, I'm asking for a job revision for um Alicia Adams moving out of operations and into director of health and safety, which encompasses quite a few areas. And then we have a director of athletics. We have, um, still have some coordinators around um gifted, ELL, and SEL, and then of course, um, they work with principals, assistant principals, and our certified and classified staff. So I broke down the departments and what the areas are under each department, certainly, we can discuss that as we move forward. But as we will be working on our strategic plan, these are the um departments that feed into our work throughout the school year, so wanted to share that with you.
Well, and I noticed that uh Patty Bowers is not on here, is that really?
Well, this is strictly the superintendent piece, so she has her piece.
Okay.
And Patty has EMIS payroll, go ahead Patty, what's your area?
I have Laura Schuler, who um does all.
I have Laura Shore who, um, does all the benefits. Becky Finster's payroll. I have Paige Hurd who does EMUS. Uh, Rio works under her in registration. And then I have Sherri Siquez in accounts payable.
So we felt the need, especially since we're moving over cafeteria, then we no longer have a cafeteria supervisor that's fitting under health and safety. Uh, just wanted you to see how those departments are, are in line and working with one another. Any questions or thoughts around that?
It's been a long time since we revised our board chart. There for a while we did have a march.
Well, I figured since we had, um, seven to eight positions missing, it was time to update this. Um, and speaking of some revisions and changes, our community may have noted that we've made some administrative changes. Um, it may look like some additions. It also is, um, we're, I can assure you although the titles may look like they're an addition, it's still awash with people leaving. Okay? So we had several changes. Um, you may have noticed that Alex Ayers requested to move from the high school to the middle school, still under assistant principal. We will be recommending Allison this evening and Allison's coming to us from Forest Hills. And she comes with a long line of education in her background. Allison, I'm looking at your bio here. Sorry, dear. Um, I know her as a Klein. Her parents were both, I worked with them as superintendents in Southwest Ohio and they're just very well thought of. So as soon as she walked in the door, I was like, oh, she looks familiar. But her last name is Cassidy, not Klein. And she comes from the Klein's and she lives, breathes and eats education. So anyway, but she's coming from Forest Hills, science teacher. She has a lot of experience with, um, what we call MTSS, our intervention process, positive behavior support. Sounds, she was, uh, sounds like she led her department in some areas. And she said to me, did you, do you have anything you would provide as a feedback at the end of the interview or anything that's reluctant? I hope you don't care that I share this. And I said, actually, my reluctance was when you came in that you didn't, you're not coming in with administrative experience. But my goodness, did you just prove me wrong with, with, you could tell she's just breathed this her whole life. But, um, she's prepared herself in her area. So we're so pleased to have Allison Cassidy coming from Forest Hills and you'll be, um, working on that motion later tonight. But I wanted to have a face and a name. So Allison, welcome. So she will be at the high school with Lori Lyman and Mr. Gagian. Then at the middle school, we still have, um, uh, with, with Alex, sorry, with Josh Stapleton leaving. He's going to give the coordinator. Alex Ayers is replacing him. Lori Harrison is moving from EIS to the preschool kindergarten building. Mr. Banks is moving to, he's going to help us. If you recall, unfortunately, we had a teen suicide. We had a lot of, uh, surveys over the last two years saying mental health, mental health, mental supports. He's going to organize our pre-K five, work with our counselors, our teachers around social emotional learning. He's also going to work with our positive behavior intervention supports. He's going to organize tier-two, um, group therapy with our counselors. He's going to work with families. So we're excited to have that help. Now that may look like an addition, but we no longer have a director of grants. And, uh, no longer have a director of public relations. We no longer have a director of, of business. So that is in lieu of that. Um, so with that, that's quite a few changes coming on, coming around the pipe. So we're excited. We're excited that we're aligning our work in our departments and we're aligning some work around mental health, which is definitely needed. And we feel like the sooner you start at the younger ages, the more skills we can give our kids, hoping to get them successful before they start going to school at high school.
Do you want to announce a plan for the IAS?
Thank you. Thank you. So that's my A D D kicking in. And we do have someone else in the room. So I would like to say, there's very few people you hire, want to hire or do hire twice in your career. And I'm being bashed very badly at Talawanda Community right now because Molly Murs is coming to us from Bogan Elementary. She's replacing Lori Harrison at the Inaridia Building. And I have to tell you, this was a hard move. She's my grandson's principal and I absolutely love her in our family. And my daughter's not forgiving me. But Molly, we're so excited to have you. And just to give you a little background, Molly actually came to us. I called Miami University many years ago and Tammy Schwartz, who led the Urban Academy, and she's known on a national level. I called her and I said, Tammy, I have an assistant principal opening at the high school. Who would you recommend without batting or stopping a, a breath? She said, oh my gosh, Molly Murs. And I thought, Molly Murs? I've had a Katie Murs and a Bernie Murs and, or Bernie Phelps and a Katie Phelps in school. And I knew she was a Phelps. So anyway, back to long story short, Molly came from Hamilton. She was the teacher academy at the high school. She also was an assistant A D, I believe. Went to Talawanda, worked with Mr. York. How many years, Mr. York?
Eight.
Eight years as his assistant principal when they moved her after I left.
Nine years.
Nine years. Seemed like eight. It was so much fun, Molly. And then when I left Talawanda, Molly was moved to the elementary. She's a javaman trade. So she is, uh, just passionate about education and we're just happy to have you. So, and that's why Tom works here this evening. He wanted to endorse her as well. So we have a lot of changes coming up in Edgewood and we are excited. So that is a lot around organizational changes and needs. But since we're still in some information items, I also want to just, um, add, hang on here. I want to do a few shout-outs if I can. And it's with our administrators. So since we're bragging on new people, I need to brag on the old ones sitting here in the room as well. Um, last year, we were sitting here talking about our report card and we were embarrassed about our report card. And I'm not saying we're still not going to be, but I'm very pleased with our preliminary results of growth. I believe it's important to celebrate any growth. And, um, our preliminary area under, remember our absenteeism? And I went to the state and said, what the heck is going on? And the state coordinator says, I think you're recording something different. Something is definitely wrong. Your district should not have that type of chronic absenteeism. Well, I'm pleased to say that our district, the state expected our district to grow three percent. We grew nine percent. With some focus on how we're recording, being more, um, focused on phone calls and getting families in and chasing some kids down. And, uh, so a big shout out to all of you. And I just want to thank you for working on that. I just am tickled. I feel like a proud mom up here. Um, so remember the, um, A E C C, our, our preschool kindergarten sat there with one star? Remember that? They have four stars. Four stars. And with some focus and a lot of that was around how we're recording our absenteeism and if we were even measuring gifted. EPS, I see Jenny Heidi back there. She was able to work with her staff and moved up, um, Jenny, were you at three stars last year at gap closing and moved up to four? Anyways, you, you moved up.
The year before we were at one.
Yep. So in the last two years, she's moved from one to four, moved up from, um, three to four last year. EIS moved from four stars to five stars at gap closing. And the high school's anticipating to get four stars on graduation. They're holding their breath on that. I think they're like one student away. These are our preliminary scores. They're not final until September, but I feel like it's worthy to say, folks, I dangled a little carrot and one little focus in front of you. And they were just like, I don't know what you want to say on a racetrack, but they went for it. And, um, it pays off. And I just can't thank you enough. And our students deserve it. And I know we're going to continue to grow as we continue to chase this down. So those are my shout-outs today. That's awesome. Yes.
Great.
Yes. And I believe, did I miss anything on my agenda here?
Yeah.
I believe I just went right through that. And that, that is the conclusion of my items.
So after you, Mrs. Spivey, I got a question for you. Who's going to, who's going to maintain the websites and all that stuff?
Very good question. And that's not on here. And we're dividing that. So you will see Josh Stapleton's going to do some of it. Alicia Adams is doing the stuff around safety. Principals are doing things around their building. Um, but Josh Stapleton will help us with the curriculum and our text institute. But when it comes to safety, that'll be Alicia.
What about like social media, Facebook and stuff like that?
Josh Stapleton. Now listen, we're down a person. So we're hoping to, I'm going to put some goals in regard to, I want us to at least do so many things a quarter, so many things a, a week and so many things a month. So we're, we're going to try to track that down. But we are down a person. So I hope that doesn't let go by putting those focuses out there about, did you do this for this month or this week?
But I think the reason I asked that question is I think over the last year or so, the communication coming out here has been absolutely incredible. Best I've seen in a long time. So I, I hope we can keep that running and totally better. So I think people appreciate it. So.
Absolutely. But we'll continue with the quarterly superintendent news and the top five, but the buildings will continue with theirs and, and, um, we'll, we'll make some goals around that to make sure we're hitting those marks. I am a little worried about Facebook. And the athletic department will maintain their own. Good question. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spivey. Next on the agenda, we have items from Board members. Mr. Messerschmidt, would you like to start?
It's got really, one thing, so a week or so ago, I was sitting down in Florida and, uh, we were down there sitting in the living room, just kind of watching TV, watching the Reds game. And, uh, we kind of celebrated Jeff Banks. I thought it was worthy to recognize his athleticism as he called him a foul ball. And, uh, they caught him right on the TV screen. I'm sitting there watching the game. I thought, it's Jeff Banks. Sure enough, it was. So wanted to recognize him for his, his athletic prowess and how he snatched it right out of the air. It was really cool seeing on TV. That's all I have. Yeah, cool.
Mr. Pressler?
Mr. Michael.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Well, I sort of welcome the new people. Thanks for coming to the board. We, we have decisions the last time we see here.
Gary's wondering why we have so many women. We're going to work on that. We're going to work on that for you, Mr. Gary.
Did you say that?
Yes, I did.
I just.
You tart not to go.
We are interviewing them, I promise you.
I like it. The more women, the better. I don't want to be with all those men.
There aren't any men that can keep up with these two, I think.
All right. Uh, just a couple of things. I mean, some of you probably noticed, uh, the work going on out front here. They said they're on schedule. I stopped talking to them today. Um, I don't think we'll have any issues as far as that goes. We have reached out to, uh, county engineer's office to maybe do a little bit of work here in this S curve because it's kind of, kind of rolls the buses and almost looks like it's going to flip over me. So, so we're going to try to push on them a little bit to see if we can get some help with that. The preliminary numbers that, uh, Mrs. Spivey just read off to us, that's very impressive to me. Um, that's a lot of growth. So that's great news. That's about all I have. So we're going to move to, uh, we're going to move to executive session for, for the following reasons. Consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. Mr. Andrew Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. It is seven eight three P M.
Thank you all for attending.
All right, we are back. Eight fifty-two. Next agenda item. The personnel items. I want to look for a motion to approve personnel item. A, B, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
And Mr. Michael Pressler had to leave. That motion carries four zero.
I'm going to look for a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-five certified salary schedule.
Let's see.
C, yes.
Submit.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Abstain.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries three zero.
Okay, I'm going to look for a motion to approve fiscal year supplemental, supplemental salary schedule.
D and E.
D and E together.
No, no, no.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. I'm all of those.
D and E together.
Submit.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
No.
No, not for the next one.
All right.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
No.
Oh, you're good. Yeah, I'm good. Yes. Okay, sorry. So we're on F?
We're on F.
And five sections. Okay, I'm going to look for a motion on section F, letter F, section one. Admin and exempt benefit schedules.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
I'm going to look for a motion for letter F, section two, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Section two, I think.
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Abstain.
I'm going to look for a motion, letter F, section three, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Abstain.
I'm on four.
I'm going to look for a motion for letter F, section four, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Abstain.
All right, letter F, section five. As presented, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. It is eight fifty-seven P M.